All right, I got the time at six thirty. Let's call the budget hearing and budget summary for fiscal year twenty five and twenty six to order. Kate, let's have a roll call.
Scott McCorney.
Here.
Jeremy Hansen.
Here.
Paul Kraus.
Here.
Jason WAC.
Here.
Travis Kramer.
Here. Notice that the Open Meetings Act is posted on the back wall. Item three, budget, budget presentation and hearing. You know Warren sat down and here you go, huh?
I'm here.
How are you? Good. Think we have the budget packet in front of us. And this is at a fifty cent levy, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We discussed today.
Well, I think there was some misunderstanding that we had time to discuss it in this meeting to decide on a levy. And realizing now we have to decide ahead of time what levy rate to post for a meeting. So if for some reason we want to consider a different levy rate, we will have to call another meeting. Been a very, very short time to change it. So this is the one that was posted. And if we approve this one, then we're set. And if we want to use a different levy rate, I think Kate had a
There's a copy, copies, yeah, of the forty-five cent levies. You guys can kind of compare and discuss.
And if we want to do that, then we'll just need to have another quick meeting to approve that as budget.
Be able to post it in the picture.
Okay. Okay. You any general comments, questions, or concerns you saw in our budget?
Well, looks just like you guys are sitting pretty good. You've got a big cash reserve. The four hundred thousand you were talking about for possible street projects, I don't think that's out of the realm at all. I was asking, that would just be something that we would, if you did want to put that in there, we don't have that in there currently. That was one of the changes.
It is not in there.
Right. So that would be one of the things we have to change in the sixty thousand dollar truck as well. It was split out between a couple of departments, I think, on the new changes. So overall, I think besides those things, we got in there what you needed and say that fifty percent or fifty cents, if you guys wanted to drop down to thirty-five, I think we were well within reason to do that. Do you guys have any questions for us? Wasn't the bond, the bond constitution, all the bond, who was setting on, you know, it's going to be more than that, it's just slow.
That was already in there.
It was. Oh, yes.
And our levy rate last year, was that, I don't believe it was fifty, was it, was it forty-eight and a half?
I'm super familiar with the last year. Yeah, forty-seven.
Forty-seven, so we'd be actually going up.
That would be the point four seven one six nine, right?
Four ten four.
Just based on the capital outlay and improvements that you guys have. I mean, that does seem like a lot to do in one year, and I think that's been kind of the trend. We budget for it, but don't necessarily always complete those tasks. So
Okay.
I don't know if that's something you guys want to prioritize. Obviously, certain things need to be done, probably like the truck.
Sure.
Or a street project, but something we, I mean, not every city has a big list like that, but it's, you guys definitely have the workable to do it.
I'm certainly not excited about increasing our levy over last year. Personally, that's just my only opinion. Comments, questions?
So we have the pack is the fifty levy last year at forty-seven. We might be entertaining the idea of bringing her down to forty-five. That would still cover her basis. That's what they're saying, right?
So is that forty-five cent levy include the four hundred thousand for sewer? It does. Oh. Yes.
Forty-five included all.
Everything, all the budget list, okay.
Could include that.
Okay. Okay.
So that makes sense. Some of the numbers in there didn't seem to add up. A five cent reduction seemed like it was only going to be sixty-some thousand difference, but it's because we added more to the budget. Okay, that makes sense.
I'm in agreeance with, I'd rather not jump all the way up with fifty. I'd like to see us stay the same or I don't know if there's a, we have a really ambitious project list. I'd hate to go lower and then not have, not get some of these projects done, but.
Yeah, and everything that we had in that list of projects was included at the forty-five cent. Is that correct? So we've got everything in there, Paul. And if we don't complete them all, we're definitely way high in cash even after.
And that's what I'm saying. I, I personally think you have a hard time completing all those tasks in a year. But it's a good goal, you know, it's something that can't be done, but it's also if you can have everything scheduled and done, that'd be great. And you're still good, you still have the income to do it and the cash reserves to, in case.
The problem isn't our wanting to do it, it's where the will of contractors and
That's what I mean. It's just hard to get anybody to get anything done.
And, you know, you never know when you need to start that motion, project in motion and, and have the money ready for it, or if it's going to be, well, we bid it and then do it next year. It seems like that's the toughest thing to to get all together.
Unfortunately, we can't predict those things these days, so.
Any other comments about the budget or the budget hearing? We won't vote here, we'll just close the session. Yes, maybe.
I'll make the motion to adjourn budget hearing and budget summary.
I'll second that.
Kate, we have motion in a second.
Jeremy Hansen.
Hi.
Jason WAC.
Hi.
Paul Kraus.
Hi.
Scott McCorney.
Hi.
Travis Kramer.
Hi. Hearing, let's call the hearing to order, the hearing to set final tax request for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Kate, let's have a roll call.
Paul Kraus.
Here.
Scott McCorney.
Here.
Jason WAC.
Here.
Jeremy Hansen.
Here.
Travis Kramer.
Here. Notice that the Open Meetings Act is posted on the back wall. I guess, but based on our current conversation, we either have to have a motion to approve the existing tax request. If we don't, then we would be required to have another meeting to approve a different one.
So we wanted to approve a different one. I can get a notice in the paper by Friday, and then we just have to have the meeting four days of posting, so next we could.
And if we are, are not going to motion for the current, do we have any recommendations on the levy we'd like to see?
Well, if we do with forty-five, why would we not do it with forty-five? That would be my thoughts.
I agree with you, Jason. I would make a motion to set the levy at forty-four point four five.
Do we need a motion or we just need directions to post that?
Instead of the publisher, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
But we'll have to do another meeting and then we'll go.
So, yeah, I'll make the notice. Publish it Friday. We could have the meeting, I think, as from this Monday. To do a hearing and then approve that resolution for the tax levy.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. Last year's valuation request was, tax rate was point four seven one. Is that the number we're talking about setting?
No, it sounds like you're going to go back down to the forty-five cents.
Right. But last year was point four seven one, right, okay. Right. And we're not concerned we're dropping that far. Okay.
Kate, if we post it Friday, it'll be in the paper Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, has neither of you doing public four days?
Friday, yes.
Okay.
Because I'll send it tomorrow and they will publish it Friday.
I just don't know if Monday would be on the
Oh, I, see, I thought that the day of the meeting was part of the count because I think because I thought, because I posted the notice on Thursday, you have to have four days, and then one day is the meeting. Our regular board meetings. That's how I understand it, but I can get to it.
I'll double check with Allison too, if she knows. She's used to.
Right, we'll have clarification then again. So I don't know what page it is in the for the budget summary. It has twenty twenty-four is point five as tax rate. But tax rate at prior tax request, which the current valuation would be point four seven. Is that assuming that that's what it would be this year though, right? If we stayed where we're at? That makes sense.
Yep.
I'm thinking it must be page twelve in our end out. Though it's not marked, but it's, it's the one after page eleven.
Evaluations, yes, evaluation went up. So that is why the tax request went down. Because of the valuation.
What was our, our actual level last year with what though? Where's that? That's not on this.
So based on the twenty twenty-five valuation, it would be four seven.
Right.
If we stayed the same.
It was fifty cents.
Was fifty cents.
And it wouldn't, and if we wanted to maintain, it would be forty-seven based off of the new valuation.
Yes, that is correct.
That we're going to forty-five. We're dropping just a little, not as much as what we thought.
Yeah.
But we're able to drop to forty-five because of the valuation going up, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
Think if we can drop, that's great. So you want to plan on doing at the hearing on our regular board meeting? And you'll check it, see if that's enough publication days?
Days would be, yeah, I find out tomorrow and then is, does Tuesday work if not Monday for everybody?
Yeah, Tuesday is a safer day. Let's do that.
I will not be here, I'm on vacation next week. I'm going to the country, so. We're well, boys.
We're doing Tuesday.
Okay. Monday or Tuesday at six thirty, I will find out and send out the official date.
Okay. Does anything else on the setting of the tax request? We take an adjournment?
Making it to adjourn. I'll second that.
Kate, we have a motion in a second. Let's have a vote.
Jason WAC.
Right.
Paul Kraus.
Right.
Jeremy Hansen.
Hi.
Scott McCorney.
Hi.
Travis Kramer.
Hi. Let's call the meeting to order for the one to six-year road and street plan hearing. Kate, let's have a roll call.
Scott McCorney.
Here.
Jeremy Hansen.
Here.
Paul Kraus.
Here.
Jason WAC.
Sure.
Travis Kramer.
Here. Notice that the Open Meetings Act is posted on the back wall. Presentation of the one and six-year road and street plan and hearing. Paul, Jason as the committee.
I think it's the one that we talked about the last time.
Yep.
So we reprioritized some things. We discussed where we wanted to go, what we want to do. The report should be all updated. You guys have questions, just let us know.
Priorities are on the drainage. Then also the patch repair work in Flitch and Bell.
Any comments or questions? From plan, from his last meeting, we had Steven's last meeting? All right, well, there's no other comments. We can adjourn from this meeting.
Kind of, I made the motion to adjourn the one and six-year road plan hearing. I'll second.
Kate, we have a motion in a second to adjourn the one and six-year road and street plan hearing. Let's have a vote.
Jeremy Hansen.
Hi.
Jason WAC.
Hi.
Paul Kraus.
Hi.
Scott McCorney.
Hi.
Travis Kramer.
Hi. All right, time to follow a regular meeting to order. Kate, let's have a roll call.
Paul Kraus.
Here.
Scott McCorney.
Here.
Jason WAC.
Here.
Jeremy Hansen.
Here.
Travis Kramer.
Here. Notice that the Open Meetings Act is posted on the back wall. Item four, public comment. Wayne, I believe you're here for public comment?
Yes, I am.
All right.
But get on the agenda. That I wouldn't, wouldn't come back to what taught her, and if you guys have been spending twenty-two years sitting up there, what have you asked them to stay away. But anyway, question I had is, this morning I was coming home and I was on the other side of the high school, anyway. Right by the pumping station there, the gas pumping station, but it's just a little bit further north. So I'm trying to think, is it Hickory Street, anyway, that comes from the, on the north of the God Sedition, first street right there? Maybe there was a gentleman that was on a UTV, anyway, that pulled out anyway, in front of me and what have you up there. He had a, a child in his arm, like this here, and he was going down the street with it, like permissible as far as our codes, as far as being allowed to go ahead and have a baby. I might have said it's a baby, but it was maybe a little bit bigger than that, anyway, with our, you know what I mean?
So, in, in public comment, we're not allowed to interact and have dialogue about it, but I would have to refer you back to the clerk on the code and what the code is. I think all we can do is listen to your experience or your recommendations or any concerns you have.
Well, I've noticed, I've noticed there's been somebody else that I've seen up in that area, and you've got that see him quite often, anyway, it's a lady, I don't even know this individual's name that I saw this morning. I had the young child cradling his arm, put it that way, when they turned the corner there in front of me, anyway, so. Anyway, but the question I have is, on there, I know that young children are not allowed to go ahead and drive with TVs and TVs on pretty streets. With manual that, what they did for a fact, anyway, I'm quite sure of that, that you don't allow that. But everybody, anyway. Seeing this numerous and numerous, numerous times that the little kid is driving, and my mom is sitting on the seat on the side. What had you had, I'm just wondering, you know what I mean? I know we, we go ahead and contacted Washington County Sheriff's Department. This morning sheriff's old car was sitting right down by the gas, the gas pumping station, but that car turned and went that way down to Eighth Street, because I was watching in my rearview mirror. And there was no lights that popped on, there was no, no movement of that car and what have you, so they just let it pass. And if there's something that, you know what I mean, that is governed by law, anyway, why is our police protection allowing this stuff to happen? If I saw it, whoever was in that broke car, that seat too. And that's, I guess that's what I'm saying, is we're not getting, getting, getting our bucks worth, anyway, from the county sheriff's department, for what, you know what I mean, what's going on in town. And it says on the lady, too, that I've seen numerous, numerous times with her son, or just the daughter, anyway. Driving on, anyway, she's sitting over in the passenger side of it and what have you, and letting him drive it. But have you know, there takes two to tangle, and there's going to be somebody, the car is probably going to win. And go, go up against an ATV or UTV, they're going to win, anyway, but there's going to be, till somebody gets killed. Why is not any action being taken by our sheriff's department? I guess that's the question I'm asking.
Okay. Well, Wayne, I appreciate your time.
Able to comment on this call?
Um, no.
Thank you, well.
I, I have a question, Wayne, really quick. Was it ATV, UTV, or golf cart today?
Well, it wasn't a golf cart, it wasn't a golf cart. I know that anybody saw it, it was a different ATV, UTV. And ATV is one where you just got right past her behind you, this one here has a seat on the side.
Okay.
I don't give a, I don't.
Nope, you're good, thank you.
So, but I'm just curious. So that's the question I have, if you know what I mean, I guess, you know.
It's a good question.
And it happened so quick this morning, what have you, but I looked in my rearview mirror, and I thought, well, if it's illegal, the lights will come on down there. Lights didn't come on, put it that way, or are we just monitoring fifteen mile an hour speed limit?
Well, and again, in this comment, we're not unable to interact and discuss what we should be doing or shouldn't be doing. But we can at least listen and take that in and let the right people who are involved that are here decide what action could be done.
Is that a copy of the ordinance or what have you?
Absolutely, you can, you can visit with Kate and get whatever you need.
When I called down here, it really bothered me. I tell you what, when I got home, you know what I saw.
Sure. I'm glad you came, and thank you, that's why we have this.
Yes, that's why I came down here. I said I never come down here again, bothering anybody down here. I want to thank you five for, you know what I mean, spending your time down here, listening to these complaints and what have you, you know what I mean, so. I had twenty-two years of that under these five centuries, that's all, he took my place.
Yeah.
I had to go down to look at my plaques that I have on the wall, because I'm a parent for six years of it. But in my first eight years of it, I got off of it because my kids said, Dad, aren't you ever going to be home? I know you guys are going through that same stuff and what have you, and I says, I'm not coming back down here again to complain about.
Well, Wayne, thank you again. I appreciate it.
You guys have great facilities here, this first time that I've been in this, this room here, put us out.
You're welcome anytime.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
And I think you're welcome to make public comment on your own.
I just wanted to agree with him. I saw the same person this morning, and they're carrying the baby on the outside edge. You know, I mean, if something's going to happen, I see a lot of it.
It was right here in the arm.
Yeah, on the outside of the car or whatever it was that we were on. That's all.
Nice.
I saw the same person.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no other public comments. Let's, we're going to jump down to item seven ID, which is Police Department's contract, discussion of possible approval of contract with Washington County Sheriff for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Sheriff Robinson is online.
I am here.
Good evening.
You guys have had a busy meeting already. If, if I can, if I could just comment on that last gentleman. I wasn't able to hear a lot, it was all muffled, but if Katie get, get his name and phone number.
Yes.
I, I'd like somebody given, we'll have, I'll have somebody give him a call. Talking about it.
Well, yeah.
The police agreement, I believe, is a paper copy, hard copy here?
Yes.
There you go. Top of its addendum to agreement between the counties, Washington. Mike, I know there was a, a pretty good sized jump from last year to this year, but I think there were some behind it. Could you elaborate for us?
Yeah, last year I made a mistake. It should have been I used a figure eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two cents last year. It should have been ninety-three thousand, eight forty-eight last year. So actually should have been a sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollar increase last year. You only got a ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollar and forty-two cent increase last year. So instead of a twenty-one point four percent increase last year, it went up thirteen point three. So this year it'll help make up some of that. It'll go up eleven percent. Instead of the four percent it should have. That is no back pay, that, that's nothing. Basically, you guys saved sixty-two hundred and fifty dollars last year, roughly, give or take a few bucks that you guys aren't responsible to pay. It's strictly my mistake. I've been going over these numbers and God help me, I cannot figure out where this mistake came from.
Well, thank you.
If any of that makes any mistake, any, any sense. I wanted to make sure that's out there. I don't think we're covering it up, and want to be very transparent. I made a mistake.
Any other questions about the agreement?
It sounds like a very reasonable price for what we hear other, other communities are paying.
I'm sorry, was that me? I, it was all muffled.
I just said it, it still sounds like a reasonable price from what we hear about other communities paying.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know we try really hard, and we still average over fifty hours a week when you're only paying forty, so we try to do a good job for you guys.
Well, if there's no other comments or questions, we would entertain a motion to approve the agreement?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Washington County Sheriff's Department for the lump sum of ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and eleven cents. Otherwise, eight thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and eighteen cents per month for our new updated annual contract.
I'll second.
Kate, we have a motion in a second to approve the contract with the County of Washington in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and eleven cents for law enforcement services. Let's have a vote.
Jason WAC.
Well, hi.
Paul Kraus.
Hi.
Jeremy Hansen.
Hi.
Scott McCorney.
Hi.
Travis Kramer.
Hi. Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
On to item five, consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, like presented.
I'll second that motion.
Kate, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Let's have a vote.
Jason WAC.
Hi.
Paul Kraus.
Hi.
Jeremy Hansen.
Hi.
Scott McCorney.
Hi.
Travis Kramer.
Hi. Um. We're going, checking in quick, let's see, I know why you're here. Is there any specific topic you're here for? Yes.
Drive away.
Drive away, gotcha, okay.
That's in streets.
Gotcha, okay, well, we'll keep moving here to get you as soon as possible. Listen, I mean, the six unfinished, unfinished business, discussion of possible approval, discussion of possible final reading of ordinance six eighty-eight amendment to AMC eighteen dot oh four dot oh two oh. Which is, I believe it's the definitions of bar services. Page forty-six, if you're looking.
I'll make a motion for the third and final reading. This is the third and final, right?
It is.
Third and final reading of passage of ordinance number six eighty-eight.
Let's see, Kate, do we have to have more than that or is that it?
Just read the title.
Read the first paragraph.
Those stuff.
Okay. An ordinance of the village of Arlington, Nebraska to amend Arlington Municipal Code. Eighteen dot oh four dot oh two zero definitions, zoning regulations. And to adopt art surface definition and provision for the reading of the same. And repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and providing for an effective date.
I'll second that.
Kate, we have a motion in a second for ordinance number six eighty-eight. Let's have a vote.
Scott Bucorny.
Bye.
Jeremy Hansen.
Bye.
Paul Kraus.
Right.
Jason WAC. Travis Kramer.
Hi. Ordinance number six eighty-eight is approved this fifteenth day of September, twenty twenty-five. Item B, uh, discussion with Griffin Japp regarding Seventh Street drainage. Uh, do we have Griffin on tonight? Nothing? So bad.
Got anything new with?
I got, me and, uh, Steve Par met with about the right ways. So I know right where they are.
Yeah.
And what he told me at the last meeting, he's. We're well within the right ways of what he's planning on doing. I haven't heard anything about press or anything from him still.
And making sure we have the ditches that Steve said we need and well.
Yep, and, uh, the, the grassy area on top of the ditch. Yeah. I, I have not heard from Griffin, so I know Scott talked to him a little bit one morning. He did call for locates. Just to find out where he's tilting.
It's all right. Just so he can.
Been the podcast. Haven't heard anything, so maybe by next meeting we'll hear from him. I'll, I'll, I'll try and contact him again and see if he's done it in, in the works.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the Seventh Street project? Otherwise, we'll move on to new business. Uh, seven A, discussion of possible approval of one percent additional increase for restricted funds vote. And I believe all of this is tied to. The budget. So do all these items need to be tabled until we have that meeting?
Guessing A, B, C. A, B, and C.
A, B, and C.
Make it approved.
Right.
Okay, everybody comfortable with that, tabling those until the other meeting? Alright. People. A, two, C. Alright, so let's jump down to D, discussion of possible approval of resolution nine one. Five two oh two five B, one to six year, one and six year plan.
Uh, I'll make a motion to introduce resolution and move forward its passage. Resolution nine one five two zero two five B. Is the correct. The chairman and village board of trustees of the village of Arlington in regular session assembled at the village hall in Arlington, Nebraska. On this fifteenth day of September, twenty twenty-five. And hereby resolve as follows, whereas the city's street superintendent. Has prepared and presented a one and six year plan for the street improvement program. For the village of Arlington, Nebraska and whereas in a public hearing, a public hearing was held on the fifteenth day. Of September, twenty twenty-five to present this plan and there were no objections to said plan. Therefore, be it resolved by the chairman of the village board of trustees. Arlington, Nebraska, that the plans and data as furnished are hereby in all things accepted and adopted.
I'll second that. Kate, we have a motion in a second to approve resolution nine one five two oh two five B. Let's have a vote.
Jeremy Hansen.
Right.
Jason WAC.
Right.
Paul Kraus.
Sorry.
Scott Bucorny.
Hi.
Travis Kramer.
Hi. Resolution nine one five two oh two five B has been approved this fifteenth day of September, twenty twenty-five. Uh, you know, if you guys don't mind, I'm going to jump down to, uh, Mr. Minor. Because we've got a couple here that could take some time. That's okay with everybody else. So, uh, uh, Steve, Stephen?
Okay, uh, I don't know. I, uh, I've got a hole growing up in my driveway. Uh, that, uh, construction on Ellsworth placed it. I didn't cut my new driveway and replaced it and now it's starting to cave down. And, uh, I think it's poor workmanship. And you say that I complain about this. I was told I complained about this at the project. I've got emails dated back to, uh, twelve twenty. Cent of heat. Of the, the dirt they poured in there that you, you guys put shit dirt in my, uh, yard. I had the hardest time in the world growing grass. And that's only because I paid somebody to spray it fertilizer every month, month and a half. I dug rocks, glass, uh. Bottles, uh, asphalt, chunks of asphalt. You get into Nikki's email, you can see that.
Okay.
Um, I, I, uh. When they replaced my driveway, what they cut out, they smeared about a. Almost a foot all the way across onto my new driveway. Understand, I just paid to have my driveway replaced. Before you guys come in and cut it, okay? Uh. They smeared and I have pictures of it. Uh, and I went up the street and I took pictures and I have them. Of every house, there's a driveway cut in that they had to cut out or do their work and not one of them has smears on it. I went all the way down Eighth Street. Not one of them has smears on it. Not one, just pot.
Okay.
Uh, they were told, I was told that my driveway would be replaced. As it was when they took it. And they did not seal it. They did not seal the saw joints. There's a chip out of it. Where they cut it at. They didn't, they should have cut it back again and, uh, but now I have to live and understand, I just bought my driveway. Before you guys cut it. And this is what I have today. When they cured it. I can show you pictures of that. They ran out of cure at my end of the street. I have spots all over. I power washed them off, but I know. But I have pictures of it. Uh. And like I say, it's not me just complaining now about it. I'm bringing it to you now because I have a hole in my driveway. My son almost broke his ankle.
Under the driveway?
It's right on the side of my driveway and it's under driveway.
Okay.
It goes about.
On the west side or the east side?
On the west side of it. I have a flower pot sitting there, so nobody steps in it because I have kids. You know, they left a hole in my front yard. And I, I don't understand. You guys hire these people to come out and do this work. I call with a complaint and I gotta call. Somebody to talk to them to tell them, come here and fix what you did. They left a hole in my yard. ABB or I think it was ABB. And I mean, I'm thinking they're going to come back and get it. I'm mowing my lawn and then as it's raining, it's. Taking the dirt out underneath it and making the hole wider that, uh, my lawnmower almost sinks into it. So I mean, I had to call and you, you'll see when I sent the pictures that Nikki sent me, uh. Somebody else's email address or some company name or whatever, you know, it's. It, it's ridiculous. If, if I contracted to do a job for you, I'd expect you to contact me if you have a problem with. And I will take care of whoever I subcontracted to do your work.
Sure. Do we have any of the pictures in the packet today, Kate?
I got them on my laptop.
Put them in, but I can't get them if we'd like to look at them.
She probably didn't think I was going to show because I've, you know, I, I just, don't get me wrong. I mean, I. I, I tried to be positive about this stuff, but I, I just don't feel like I'm doing it.
First I've ever heard of it, Steve, so I.
Yeah, I, I know, but I mean, what, five years ago, I emailed Nikki. I can't put that date on the email. I have the emails here. With the pictures attached to them, lots of pictures and video.
May I, may I repeat just a little bit? I did meet, I went down to the old Mr. Minor's, uh, property during the construction. We, we looked at it and. The contractor deemed that it was acceptable work at the time. Um, I, I don't know if Mr. Minor was ever, um, relayed that message. You were successful. Uh, this, the, the contractor and me deemed that it's acceptable. I mean, granted, it's not, it's, it's not probably going to look exactly, no, no concrete is going to blend in after. A certain, you know, concrete's are just, they're, they're going to be different colors.
Sure they are. Everybody else's looks the same though. Some of them are a little different that have older.
I, I'm just saying that we didn't, we didn't neglect, neglect looks, what I'm trying to say.
Okay, but let me show you the pictures that I'm talking about.
They were, they were, the board can look at the. I'm just telling you that, that, that the city did not neglect his, his request to look at.
Okay, okay. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that. I sent in a complaint about something and I'm emailing back, contact somebody else. Yeah, I don't think so.
And I'm guessing it was probably our engineer, project engineer that.
Our project engineer and.
That makes sense.
Engineer at the time.
So that, that's not that crazy that we.
Yes. Um, the other thing with the hole by your driveway, both Taylor and I have gone to look at it.
Mm-hmm.
It, it appears to be more of a. And I, and I'm not saying that it, that it isn't anything to do with construction. I never, I'm not saying that, but it appears to be like a. It almost looked like a gopher hole to me. And I know there was a tree there at one, am I correct, Steve? Was there a tree there?
There was a tree a little ways away.
A little ways away, which, which could have been a root that, that rotted away eventually since the tree was cut down. I'm not saying that, but.
Was that tree removal part of the street project?
Yeah, they took both of my trees out.
They did, they did take a tree there. Um, from what, from what I can see is I think that it could be filled back in. I don't think it's going to be any structural damage to the driveway itself. From what I could see, I'm.
In my, in my opinion, and I'm just saying from what I see is it's already starting to sink on that side.
I mean, I'll, 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 sometime when you're there, Mr. Minor, we can, we can take a look at it a little bit, Mike, for.
Hmm, hmm, sure.
I don't know if the cracks are sealed, but there's definitely stuff in that cracks. I mean, there's weeds going at too, but.
Uh, so, just, just to get it out there, wh- what are you asking from the board at this time? Making sure it's very clear.
Well, I think they should fix it. I think they should lift the driveway up because I believe it is sinking on that side and fill it back in.
Okay.
As far as lifting the driveway, you're talking about maybe like putting some mudjacking under.
I don't know. I don't know how to do that. I'm not a, I'm not a concrete guy at all.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
If I can show you this.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm great. I, I, I saw some pictures, Kate, and I couldn't really tell what you.
That's what my theory looked like.
I remember this. I remember this. Yeah.
You already poor workmanship, I mean.
Um. I mean, has it, has it blended in since?
I, no, I, I power washed it off. It took me a long time to power wash it off.
Okay.
And then you see the smear, right? All along there. Again, power washing it off every time I have my power wash out. Yeah, here it is. Four years later, still have traces of it.
Uh, yeah, I'm just telling you that we didn't, we didn't even find it. We weren't, we weren't neglecting it. We went and looked at it and we deemed, three, three people deemed that it was acceptable work for the property. So. I mean, as far as your driveway's sinking. If it's sinking due to the project, now have they, do you know, did they run, are we talking about fiber underneath there? You said ABB.
They ran a line under there. Yeah, that's.
No, that's, that's not the city though. That's, that's ABB. That's not the city's responsibility. That is ABB themselves. We don't contract them out to do. Hard fibers or anything. That's, that's ABB. So that wouldn't be, if that's causing the damage, that would be something that I would get a hold of ABB. So therefore it's my problem to get a hold of ABB. Correct. I mean, that.
We didn't sign up for them to do that.
There was no, there was no, um, utility relocation as part of that project, was there?
Um, um, at that point, there, I don't believe there was Paul. I don't believe there was.
No, I don't remember them having relocated.
It would have been caused by, but it also could have been caused by a root that, that had since the two were out of the way. I'm not disagreeing with Mr. Minor at all. And that's something that I can, we can go take a look at and I can have, uh, Steve Par come up. With J O and see if he thinks that it might be something. That the city is responsible for, from the project. Granted, the project was, I don't even know, five years, four years ago, was it?
Two thousand, December of two thousand is when I sent my emails in.
Twenty twenty, you're saying?
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Okay.
So I mean, yeah.
I will get a hold of Steve Par and, uh, see if we can go take a look at it. Get eyeball, see if there's any, you can resolve the problem.
Okay, I'd like to be there when you do that.
That's fine. No, that's fine.
Steve or John and Steve to meet.
And Jason or Paul with the streets committee, would you, one of you like to be present for the meeting? It, it, we can make it work up there, something, Paul. That'd be good. Mr. Minor, is there a day of the week that works good for you?
Uh, no, I mean, what's your hours though? Is it going to be during the day?
Uh, more than likely it's.
Okay, just give me an hour. I can take off work anytime.
Six thirty and, and four or five. I mean, I don't, J O, it's up to them. I can come in whenever, but it's up to the engineer.
Yeah, just tell me what time, what day and I can make, I'll make it.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We can leave.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you. Guys, have a good evening.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Alright.
Excellent.
Uh, let's jump up to, uh. Seven E, discussion of possible approval of ordinance six eight seven, employee wages.
I remember.
I believe last time we spoke about, um, wages, one of them that came up was, um, Kate discussed, uh, Gates wages as a deputy clerk. And, uh, uh, maybe needing a possible additional adjustment. In addition to, uh, the normal increase that we do, which is usually a flat rate for all employees. Kate, Kate, any comments, questions, anything?
And talked about the last time. That's everything.
Um, historically, we've, we've pulled the CPI as a starting block to determine how much inflation. And I did, went and pulled those and adjusted for, uh, primary categories. Again, if, uh. General overall inflation for the CPI index was two point six two. You highlight categories, uh, more relative to household lifestyle, services, fuel, recreation, food, energy. It's closer to three point four seven. Uh, that just again, that's just to give some sort of starting blocks to what, what the economy has done in the last year. In compared to prior years.
Travis?
Yes.
Is that an accurate representation of what it's, what it is? I mean, we don't go by its future. So I know that from talking to, uh, financial people, they say that the, uh. The tariffs and stuff haven't even really kicked in yet.
Right. So. Yeah, and I don't think we've ever done futures because, um, we've usually just.
Be next year then.
We've typically just take the last one year saying what's, what's been happening to us. Again, I don't think we've ever just gone, that's the number. We've just used that as kind of an idea because. I honestly don't know well enough without looking at something like that on how much.
No, I just, I didn't know what, it's, you know, everybody's so scared that.
Right.
You don't know.
Right.
What's going to happen.
And it could jump a lot more.
Or no good.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, one thing, um, to bring up is in the deputy position has taken on the robot responsibilities of the sexton. And, uh, just from what we would have paid in the past, I don't know if we've ever paid that money, but it was about five hundred dollars what we would have paid a sexton if we had to pay for the position. And so just rough numbering it, that's about a quarter an hour. Um, that would be to that position just by taking on the responsibility versus not paying another sexton. So just some numbers to, to maybe help build a case for. Any thoughts, recommendations? Um, because we would have to do another budget meeting, we do have the rare opportunity here to not pinpoint this tonight. So if we needed some dialogue or go into executive section talking about contracts in general, we would have that opportunity. Again, don't know if we need it, but. Door, I'd take a motion if somebody wanted to make one.
Let's say you can move a meeting along, I'd like to. Our options in an executive session towards the end of the meeting.
Then we can still. Complete this in next week's meeting, if that works. Everybody comfortable with that? Okay, then we will plan to go to executive session at the end of the meeting. All right. Moving on to item F, discussion of possible approval of resolution nine one five two oh two five D. A resolution calling for a special election to be held in the village of Arlington, Nebraska on December ninth, twenty twenty five. Regarding a prop proposition for the issuance by the village of its final obligation bonds. In the amount not to exceed five million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the purposes of constructing and equipping. A new swimming pool and related facilities.
Don't know if we approve this bond and the voters, if the voters approve of this bond, because that's the way it would have to go.
Alright, yeah, so with, with pool related projects, it all falls under the municipal building code. And that requires a, so unlike some of the highway bonds. Generally for villages, it's anything that's water, sewer or paving related. You as a board can make that decision to issue bonds and fund those types of projects. Any type of swimming pool or. Building project generally has to be taken to a public vote to approve.
Let's say that vote passes for the five million, six hundred, whatever that number is. What, what if the scope of it, the design changes? Can we scale that back at any time?
Yes, you can. Yeah, and that often happens. So, so yeah, maybe just to give you a brief overview of that. Election resolution that you have on the agenda and then I can talk through some updated numbers. So. So it's a great question. I'll start with that. So oftentimes with these pool projects. Within this resolution time, you're gonna vote on not to exceed bond number. Uh, and that's similar to some of the bond ordinances that we've done in the past. We have to set that not to exceed number. Nothing obligates us to issue that much in bonds. Um, you just can't exceed it. And so if any type of grant funding or donations or cash that you have on hand. That you want to use towards the project, then we can just use that to offset that bond amount. Uh, but we do have to, for the purposes of voting it, generally we'll vote what your, what your engineer tells us. Their cost estimate is, um, for a couple of reasons. One, if, if grants don't come through or donations, those types of things. Have the funding available for it to construct it. Um, and two, it, it does put you in a good position for grants and those types of things. We've had that conversation a lot. It's kind of backwards. You'd think, well, and you might get asked the question too, you know, why, why aren't we going out to get grant funding for this project and. A lot of communities, they need to show that they have community support and the funding available for the project. Which often comes through that, that public vote. Um, I've thought a lot about why, and I think it's because these grant programs would just get overwhelmed with. Requests for projects that would probably never get off the ground without that grant. Um, so they do like to see that. That bond vote pass before you can kind of move into your grant phase. And usually your engineer helps you through that, takes the lead on. Walking you through that part of the project. But, so that's, that's what the resolution tonight will do. A few things that I wanted to point out within that resolution, and I don't know if you have it from the. The last couple pages, otherwise I've got copies we can hand around here to. A last couple of due to that resolution. Maybe the notice of your resolution, uh, calling for the election that will have to publish in the newspaper. So you decided to afford that tonight. Um, state statute requires that you provide notice of this election. Which would call for an election on December ninth. I think we were initially visiting about maybe a November election. And come to find out that's Veterans Day and so, um. The resolution tonight for a December ninth meeting, there's quite a bit of. Legal notice that we need to provide of the election before we can actually formally hold that election. So we'll take some heat and help you through all of that. We'll be working with fate to coordinate on a lot of that, but. Just so you're aware, that, that notice, which is I think the last. The two or three pages of that resolution is your, is your step will, that will publish. And then the last page is an actual sample ballot. So that, that is how the ballot would read. Come election day. And I don't know if the county has mentioned anything in terms of, or if you're just always a mail in. Uh, or if they'd be willing to do a polling place. Generally, these types of special elections are usually mail in. Ballot, so the county would send it out, send out a ballot to you three weeks ahead of time. Uh, you'd fill it out, mail it back in for a mail in. Special election in, in December and, and we'll work with the county to, to coordinate all that. Um, I think three weeks ahead of December ninth is right around Thanksgiving. So we'll kind of be coordinating with the county and planning a lot of that. Uh, but I did want to point that out as well. So, and then we've got to deliver. Uh, the election, the signed election resolution to the county election commissioner by October seventeenth. Uh, to call for that December ninth meeting. We've got to do it eight Fridays before the election. Um, so that October seventeenth is, would be your deadline to deliver that resolution to the county. So, and I can hand around some updated bond numbers if we want to visit, visit about that and talk through the levy impact a bit as well. Should be, should be plenty to go around here. Or you might hand in those down.
Actually, I should give, give you the rest.
Should be enough. I'm gonna hand you, hand you an extra as well. So this is just an updated set of bond numbers that we put together. So your, your previous pool bonds, we paid that off in twenty twenty four. Uh, so you don't have any other general obligation bonds outstanding other than. Your highway allocation bonds that we've done some paving projects in the past. Uh, and then you have a, a revenue bond that you can use on. On silver. And so this shows a twenty year general obligation pool bond. This would deposit five and a half million dollars to the village to construct the project. So you have a little bit of cushion between, you know, the actual bond amount and the number that you're voting in your, in your resolution. Uh, but this would, this, this set of numbers here would deposit five and a half billion. Interest rates right now on the current bond market, we haven't seen them come down really just over the last several weeks. Uh, we've gotten some less favorable employment. Data that's come out and so it's almost a hundred percent baked in that the Fed will cut this week. At their, at their, uh, Federal Reserve meeting. And then they're anticipating one additional cut. Uh, by the end of this year as well. So the market's looking at fifty basis points. Uh, through the end of this year and then, um, additional cuts into next year as well. So by the time that. You're in a position, you know, you, you built the bond in, in December, you worked through the design and bidding and all as you mentioned is still. Uh, any scope, design changes, those types of things, did the project, by the time you'd be in a position to issue your bonds and need the funding. Could certainly be in an entirely different rate environment. And I, I, I'd be confident to say that that's only gonna improve going into next year. Outside of just anything that we can't see happening. So, and we can keep you updated on, on interest rates and. Those types of things. I just wanted to share that because even just, and since these all numbers have been printed, we've seen rates come down since then. So. So with that being said, a twenty year bond. Uh, that effective yield is at four seventy five. And so we, again, we think that's pretty conservative. Just for planning purposes, um, but that's the rate that's, that these numbers are ran with. The first schedule, like we've done in the past, so this is just an annual debt service schedule. So that first page, if you look all the way over to the right. Your annual principal and interest payment would be just over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year. On, on that size of bond. So, so what does that mean then? So on your current valuation on page four.
I'm including a question.
Yeah, that's it. That's a question.
For a hundred thousand.
Yes, so on page four, that shows your tax levy impact, the tax levy that would be required to make that bond payment. So I usually talk in terms of what's the impact for a hundred thousand dollar valuation. It's just an easy number to scale up and down. So all the way to the right, that's the tax rate that would be required to make that bond payment based on your current valuation. Which is thirty two point five cents. So thirty two and a half cents, which means that's three hundred and twenty five dollars per year on a hundred thousand dollar. Property value or home in town. So you can scale that up. So two hundred thousand dollar property value, that's six hundred dollars per year, or you can scale it down accordingly as well. Uh, which breaks down. So again, if you go back to a hundred thousand dollar per year, that breaks down into about twenty seven dollars per month. On, on what that impact would be. So a few things that I would say with that. That's generally the highest it's ever gonna be. Uh, as your, as your bond rates and your payments are fixed and locked in over the life of the bond. As your valuation grows over time, that tax levy that's required to pay the bonds can come down. And then these, this is also very conservative. So this assumes that all the bonds get issued all at once. Right away for your project. Generally on, with pool projects especially, um, these types of larger projects. You don't need all the five and a half million right away. We generally break it up and issue it over time as needed for your constructive, construction schedule. So what that means, what that does is a couple of things. One, it allows your levy to step up over time. So you don't need that full levy right away. It all, and then it also allows your valuation to grow. Couple, two years in between needing that full levy so that, that levy impact could come down. But it also, it's a hedge against interest rates as well. So. If you get into next year and you, you issue two or two and a half million. For the first trial launcher, for the first funding of that project. And then you push it out into twenty twenty seven to do the, the remaining two million or two and a half million, whatever that final number ends up being. Again, it could be in a completely different rate environment come twenty twenty seven. Um, in a, in a positive or a negative way. And, and that means you either got. Part of your funding locked in at a lower interest rate in twenty six, or part of it's gonna be locked in in twenty twenty seven, potentially at lower rates as well. So, so those are the numbers, um, after tonight in terms of just the process and timing. Those types of things. So we, we delivered that election resolution to the county. Um, provide legal notice of your election. Generally, I don't know if you've been working with a pool committee. Kind of to be putting some of the design together and, and kind of get community feedback. Oftentimes they're a good resource as well, just to share information about the project. Timing that, that you're calling for this election to be held in December. Try to get that word out to the, the community. You've got to be a little bit careful. That you still comply with accountabilities and disclosures. So officially you as a board can't make a Facebook post saying, go vote yes for this. Pool bond. Um, but you can share information, uh, share the, share the financial, the levy impact. The cost of the project, those types of things. So generally it's kind of working with that committee. Over these next several months to just educate, answer questions, uh, from the community. And, and we're always happy to attend those meetings as well. So if you have. A town hall or if you just have a open house one night and you want us to come and just be there for questions or. Uh, just to resource on the election and forms. I'm always happy to do that. Um, and then, and then your, your ballot would get mailed out. We, we would give you a date, uh, with the county of when they're planning to mail those out. And then that election deadline would be December ninth. So. So assuming if it does pass, then I, you, you'd work with your engineer on. Final design, bidding, you'd know your number and then we would come back to you. And we'd need to adopt a bond ordinance. So in that ordinance, we could resize the bond accordingly, based on where your bids came in, those types of things, but.
But that would be after the vote.
That'd be after the vote. Yeah. Yeah. So this is kind of the first step. In, in the process is going through that bond election.
So that tax rate, uh, let's say you, you threw out the number of three hundred and twenty five dollars per hundred K valuation. If the scope of the project changes by twenty five percent or ten percent. Is it easy to apply that to that three hundred fifty dollar payment? Or is there some administrative in there that's gonna take up? Part of that amount?
No.
Take ten percent off of the price. Is it gonna take?
Yes.
Ten percent off the taxes. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty easy to scale.
I'm just thinking, there's been a lot of talk of, I think the, the surveys came back with, without one of the things that was. In the project and I don't sure, you know, if people ask, what's that gonna affect the tax burden? I'd like to know how you figure that, so.
Yeah, that, that's a great way to figure it. Um, and we can always, if your engineer gives you a different number. We can run that number and, and show it to you. Otherwise, that's a quick.
We have something to start with. That's, you know, that's something.
Yeah.
Because that's the burning question. Everybody says, yeah, we'd love a new pool. And then everybody who owns a house says, how much is this gonna cost, you know? And that's, that's a question we need to answer.
Yeah. I think that was scribble on from engineer, the five two, but.
Well, five, six covers up to that. So I'm not worried about that. But I'm just saying, I was wondering where that number came from.
Yeah.
Kate, the number in the budget, that's five point two something. We should ask after.
I had Terry fun function.
Uh, so if you are on page. If you go to page, um, page three.
Yep.
Capital investments under culture and recreation. Capital investment of five point two two seven. I'm assuming that's the number. I don't know where we came up with that number.
I wonder if the forty five cent.
Is that what Kevin told us was? Maybe that might have been the number that Kevin showed. Kevin has been so, Kevin has been so thoughtful giving us any kind of number. So that's why. I was wondering where that came from.
Yeah, there's still five point two here. I don't know. I put it all in a, that budget list and sent it to Ryan. So.
Jeremy, Jason, you guys, sorry, yeah, you guys have also attended some meetings. What do you think of five point six? Does that seem? The ballpark for the cool project they're wanting? Was it high?
Oh, I think you gotta get rid of the splash pad to get to that probably. Be below the fence of, actually. I think five, six, getting rid of and not doing parking would be right in that ballpark. The parking was like two fifty. So I think five, six would be without the parking, keeping the splash pad, but.
Well, and the, the slide is two fifty.
And the slide is two fifty. So like, there's still a lot of. Options to, to. You know, based on what we've received from feedback, there's still a lot of options that can be eliminated. Um. But again.
I think the number of five, six will do that project.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's a high, the high part of it.
So the question is, do we go with the five, six, which is the high end of it, if we think there will be support?
Right, like if, if that's.
Well, there's always gonna be somebody that, that doesn't read the up to, or sure.
Correct.
And.
And understanding that.
And, and they're signing up or up to that amount.
Up to that amount, right. So you have to assume.
You have to assume up to that.
Up to that amount.
Yeah.
So in, at the same time, from that regard, so, you know, let's say.
I think you gotta be honest with them.
Yeah, four point eight, well, you know, would I love to see it at four point eight? I'd love to see it even lower than that between other stuff, but. The reality of it, I think you, you present the five, six, five because that's what the total, if we get nothing. That's, that's the project would cost.
When, uh, when we do these, is this a, is this hap, do you know if this has to be a qualified bidder? For these, or is that?
For when you actually bid the construction.
Yes.
I think, yeah, I, I, I do think it should be a.
I'm trying to think of when we had a USDA. I'm trying to think of when we had a USDA loan. I think there was only qualified bidders and there was no no negotiation.
So maybe to clarify with that, so qualified bidder, meaning.
Like registered.
Uh, like you comply with the Build America, Buy America, all the provisions. So I guess I, how I'm reading your question is does the village need to bid it out like a major construction project? Yes. USDA requirements are so specific, so.
This doesn't, this doesn't fall under their.
No, it just.
Okay, that was my question.
I think that's what you're, yeah, yeah, yes. So, yeah, different than that, different than USDA complying with all those requirements.
Yeah, I think those answer my question. Yeah.
And this only puts it on the ballot for the vote.
Right.
And I think that's where it needs to be. Let the people decide.
Unless there's any other questions, I take a motion.
Yeah, thanks.
Five, eight.
Yeah, I think you read all the way to section seven.
If you'll bear with me, um, I move to introduce resolutions nine, one, five, zero, two, five, D. Um, for its passage. And this is a resolution of the chairman and board of trustees of the village of Arlington, Nebraska. Village calling for the special election to be held in the village of, on December ninth, twenty twenty five regarding the proposition for the issuance, um, by the village of its general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed five million six hundred fifty thousand dollars to pay the cost of constructing and equipping a new swimming pool and related facilities. Whereas the village of Arlington, Nebraska, the village is a body corporate and politic and the village validity, we, validly existing under the constitution and laws of the state of Nebraska, the state and whereas section seventeen dash nine, five, zero reissue revised statutes of Nebraska is amended. The Bond Act authorized the village to issue its bond for the purposes of acquiring real estate, improving equipment, and furn- furnishing such real estate as parks and recreational grounds and buildings, swimming pools and dams. But only after the question of issuing such bonds has been, uh, submitted to the elect electors of the village as a general or special election where therein and a majority of the electors voting have voted in favor of issuing such bonds. And whereas the chairman of the board of trustees, the board finds and determines that it is necessary, desirable, advisable, and in the best interest of the village and its residents, that the village construct and equip a new municipal swimming pool and related facilities, the project, and whereas the finance, the costs of the project, it will be, it will be necessary for the village to issue its general obligation bonds in the total principal amount not to exceed five million, six hundred and fifty thousand in one or more series bearing interest at such rates, maturing on such dates, being sold at such prices and having such other terms and provisions. All as, uh, all as shall be determined by the board and to levy and collect annual, annually a special levy of taxes against all the taxable property in the village sufficient in rate and amount to pay the principal of the premium in any and the interest of said bonds as the same become due. And whereas during the past six months, there has not been submitted to the electors of the village uh, proposition for the issuance of bonds uh, pursuant to the Bond Act to finance the cost of the project or the, um, substantially similar project. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the chairman and the board of the trustees of the village of Arlington, Nebraska as follows. Section one, the board hereby, uh, directs and calls for a special election to be held in the village of on Tuesday, December ninth, twenty twenty five, the election, at which time it shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the village the following proposition. Shall the village of Arlington, Nebraska, the village issue its bonds in a principal amount not to exceed five million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, for the principal or for the purpose of financing the cost of constructing and equipping the new municipal swimming pool and related facilities within the village, said bond to be issued for the ti- from time to time to be sold at such prices, to bear interest at such rates, to become due at such times and to have, uh, such other terms and provisions. All as may be fixed and determined by the chairman and the board of trustees of the village. And shall the village, uh, cause to be levied and collected annually a special levy of taxes against all the taxable property in the village is sufficient in the rate and amount to pay interest, principal and premium on said bonds as the same become due. For said bond tax against said bond and tax. The ballots to be voted upon and cast at said election shall have printed there, thereon the foregoing, um, proposition followed by the words for said bond tax and against said bond and tax following said proposition. Uh, qualified electors voting in favor of said proposition shall, uh, black blacken completely the oval opposite the words for said bond and tax following the proposition. The qualified electors voting against said proposition shall blacken completely the oval, um, opposite the words against said bond attacks following said proposition. Section two, the election shall be conducted by the election commissioner of Washington County, Nebraska, the election commissioner in accordance with the Bond Act and sections thirty two dash one, zero, one, um, and sequential reissued revised statutes of Nebraska as amended, uh, the Election Act. At the discretion of the luck, uh, election commissioner, the election may be conducted by mail in accordance with section thirty two dash nine and five two through thirty two dash nine, six, zero, upset election act. The board authorizes the and directs each of the chairman and or slash treasurer in conjunction with the election commissioner to do, uh, all other things and take all other actions appropriate and necessary in order to cause the proposition um, described herein to be submitted to the qualified electors of the village. The village sell, shall reimburse the election commissioner for the expenses of conducting the election is. Section three, the board requests that the election commissioner publish notice of the election and post notice of the election in the office in the office of the election commissioner, in each case no later than forty two days prior to the date of the election as required by section thirty two dash eight oh two of the Election Act. Section four, the board authorizes and directs the clerk slash treasurer to publish or to cause to to be published notice of the election in the Arlington Citizen or such other legal newspaper of general circulation in the village, one time each week for four consecutive weeks. The first such publication occurring at least twenty days prior to the election. Such notice of the election shall be uh, substantially in the form, um, submitted to this meeting, which is attached heretofore as exhibit A. Section five, the board authorizes and directs the clerk slash treasurer to furnish the final form of the ballot for the election to the election commissioner no later than forty two days prior to the date of the, of such election or such other date as may be required by the election commissioner. The ballot shall be substantially in form submitted to this meeting with any changes as, uh, may be required by the election commissioner, which is attached here to as exhibit B. The board further authorizes and directs the clerk slash treasurer to publish or shall cause to be published the form of the sample ballot in Arlington Citizen or such other legal newspaper of general circulation in the village one time, no more than ten days, nor less than three days prior to the election. Section six, the clerk slash treasurer is directed to cer- uh, certify a copy of the resolution to the election commissioner of the Washington County Nebraska, the election commissioner, no later than October seventeenth, twenty twenty five, which is the eighth Friday prior to the date of the election. Section seven, the resolution shall be enforced and take effect from and after its passage as provided by law. Good.
I second that. Kate, we have a motion and a second. We approve a resolution nine, one, five, two, zero, two, five, D. Let's have a vote.
Scott McCourney.
Hi.
Darren Hansen.
Hi.
Paul Kraus.
Hi.
Jason, Josh Crimman.
Hi. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Any questions come up, feel free to call or.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
It's awesome to hear. Uh, section G, streets, committee report, Paul and Jason. Anything new?
Not really, just, uh, looking, jumping, looking, getting started on some some street repairs if we can. Get this bidding going and, and make sure we're in front of it.
Yes, anything else? All right. Let's jump into B, street and parks report. John.
Oh. Well, I'd like to start, before I do my report, I'd like to start with by saying thank you to both Kate and Jake for everything they put up with in the office. You guys just saw tonight, they filled all them calls. They get the complaints. Russ and I don't get the complaints. We just hear them. So she, them two are they're the backbone to the whole place and they do a heck of a job with getting everything ready for meetings and feeling all these calls and the budget and everything else. I'd like to give them a, a big thank you from, from our department. They, they help us out a lot.
Appreciate it.
But anyhow. Enough of that. Got to me. Um, we just, um, did a lot of, uh, maintenance. We're, we're, we're trying to get ready for winter, um, trying to get the street signs all straight enough. It's, I don't know if you noticed, we've got a few of them done. We're, we're sort of plugging away at them. We, we got the, uh, the, all the crosswalks around the pool done. I, I'm working my way out from there and hopefully we can get some more of them done this week before it rains. Uh, filled a bunch of potholes in around town on Dodge Street. We tried Taylor tried to put some concrete in some of them. We'll see how that holds up. Maybe we'll work our way up the street and do that and prevent that them curves and gutters from deteriorating anymore. If we can fill them with concrete, padded into worst one at the very east end of it to see if that will hold in there first. Um, Russ and I were, had some fun on Monday. They'll tell you more about that. Brett has been doing a little training with me on the water plant, so he can be relieved of his duties on some weekends and I can, I can think over that. Hopefully we can get Taylor involved in that too and start our rotation of our, of our on-call thing. Other than that, it's just basically the normal stuff. If there's anything you guys have for me, I'd be happy to answer any questions or any concerns around town. I know we have some, some money in the budget from this year. There's some rock at the cemetery and stuff. I'd like to get that either all or delivered before the budget season ends so that we can have that on hand at least for for maybe next spring to put it in. I know it's a bad time to put it in right before winter or else we just scrape it right off, bro. But if we have it. Then, because it's already budgeted for this year.
Okay.
Except, I don't know, we haven't done the radar sign thing. Did you guys get a look at that, Travis? I know he said that you guys were going to try and do some different spreadsheet or something.
We did the last spreadsheet, but I'm going to get back with Kate and see if we can make this easy to just copy and paste this into it. So we can have a running graph.
And there again, if that's something that I can do, to take that load off Kate a little bit, she's got a lot of things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
More than willing to learn that too.
Okay, yeah, it's, hopefully it's not too bad. Just pretty much copy, please, or trade, but we'll have to sit down and look at it.
Other than that, I, I need to look at it to see if that, if me setting that sign to a different mode, we've told.
What day was that? Do you remember what the day was?
September is the day that I did it.
And did you put it back? Cause it was.
I did put it back because we were getting concerns from some people.
And so it stopped when like.
Yeah.
We had the sheriff come in and say, yeah, I don't know, complaints from some, some people around town that the signs aren't working. We had to say, oh, they are.
Stealth mode.
Yeah.
I'm more want to rule about stealth mode.
And I know we did, back to the kind of parks and did it, Kate, I do believe that we have something in there in the budget for, for the lights on the water shafts.
I think you're right, yeah.
It was.
And I, yeah. I went through them all last year and I got them all working, but I think we've got several out. And I know that there's been.
Anything else for John on the street and parks report? Okay, if not, we'll move on. John, thank you. Item D, discussion of possible approval of change order number five from J E O. Change order amount. Um, it might seem this wrong. Is it a decrease?
Yes.
Refund? So that means we get a refund check for one thousand four hundred eighty one dollars and ninety nine cents?
Something to do with Graham and.
Miss felt slot sprinklers done by others.
I tried to figure that out. I was going to call John Newberry and ask about it.
They're going to send us a check, I think. I think we approved the change order before they changed their mind.
For two thousand eight hundred seventy three dollars and ninety nine cents. Is that how you read it? This one right here?
I've got, oh, that's two of three. Yeah, I, okay, I didn't go all the way down. First three of three.
I'm just looking at page one. It says two thousand eight hundred seventy three dollars and ninety nine cents.
It doesn't have a.
So John Newberry, when he sent that, he's.
That's the total of page two.
Same.
Were there overages on something?
They sent also, they sent for me that hunting fund.
Description.
Regarding not being paid for.
The description says deduct for seeding, fertilizing and mulch done by others. Deduct for sprinklers done by others. So there.
That is what, that is what we're, we have to pay them, I do believe. You know.
Those are the ones that were paid up.
Eighteen seventy five.
So it's going to be a wash, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're getting this back.
We approve, well, we already approved to reimburse the homeowners and they're paying us back, basically.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the change order number five from J E O.
I'll second that.
Kate, we have a motion and a second to approve the change order in the amount of a a refund of two thousand eight hundred seventy three dollars and ninety nine cents. Let's have a vote.
Jeremy Hansen.
Hi.
Paul Kraus.
Hi.
Scott McCourney.
Hi.
Travis Crimman.
Hi. Item E, discussion of possible approval of resolution nine, one, five, two, oh, two, five, C. Signing of the municipal annual certification of program compliance fully twenty five.
So ours, like the allocation program compliance, as you said. Allow the fairness to pay for all clients with the program.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution nine, one, five, two, zero, two, five, C. Whereas the state of Nebraska statutes, section three, nine, dash, two, one, one, five, section three, nine, dash, two, one, one, nine, three, nine, dash, two, one, two, zero, three, nine, dash, two, one, two, one, and three, nine, dash, two, five, two, zero. Two, it requires an annual certi- certification of program compliance to the Nebraska Board of Public Roads Classification and Standards. And whereas the state of Nebraska. And whereas the state of Nebraska statutes, section three nine dash two one two zero also requires that the annual certification of program compliance by each municipality shall be signed by the mayor or village chairperson and shall include the resolution of governing body of the municipality authorizing the signing of the cer- the certification. Be it resolved that the village board chairperson of Arlington is hereby authorized to sign the municipal annual certification of program compliance.
Kate, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution nine one, nine one five two zero two five C. Let's have a vote.
Paul Kraus.
Hi.
Scott McCourney.
Hi.
Jason Weasey.
Hi.
Jeremy Hansen.
Hi.
Travis Kramer.
Hi, resolution nine one five two zero two five C has been passed this fifteenth day of September twenty twenty-five. H, water and sewer. Water and sewer report, Russ.
John was saying we had all kinds of fun last Monday down at the, the list station.
And he lied.
Huh?
And he lied.
We had a wood break dogs and bowls, they're off, filled the pit full of water. And that all sunk out. So we got that fixed on Tuesday, but now I had a seal leak code this morning, so I got them pumped a little ahead tomorrow.
Russ, we got a pretty healthy bill from Monday, you wanna go into a little bit of detail on what happened?
So, what we think happened. The, the check valve, it had a lot of vibration in there. The fluid on the bottom of the, the propeller that pushes all the water to Fremont. It came loose, the other one's round, they actually broke off. The other five holes snapped off. So that one that pumped, it filled that pit all the way full.
That twenty-six foot pit.
Yeah, thirty-six. So, we'll do, be fairly like thirty-one thousand gallons.
Thirty-one to forty thousand gallons.
And it was coming in from the other side. So we were pumping, we had, Bruton pumping out, pumping down, we had four pumps in there pumping, trying to get all the water out so we can get down there. So I could get the other valves open to run the second pump. So, it was fun.
And it was Russ's birthday.
Happy birthday.
He birthed it.
They're right.
So, yeah, the pumping probably won't be cheap.
No, that's why I wanted to talk about a little bit, so everybody understood that we see that difference.
I have no clue. But they've all went.
Meanwhile, you know, we couldn't, we still, we still have some in.
Coming in from the.
But we had to capture that.
I have all the states, so I could pump out in the field. So we get it out after. So hopefully that seal's not bad. But they might have to pull that pump tomorrow. Put the rebuilt one in and then rebuild that one. And that was the old pump, not the new pump that we're.
Okay, I asked Russ to look, I know we did some pump for him, and that was the one we did not do.
Well, they'll choose the new one, but this, there was a tag on top of it, I did.
Okay, good, well, makes me feel a little better.
Did, uh, was this the same kind of problem we've had in past where, when we have to bypass, does this affect the crops around there?
No.
Okay.
It should.
Okay.
Someday I would like to get.
A pipe that's longer.
All the way down to the river.
Yeah.
Or I will look more at the splitter at the plants. Because there has to be existing pipe going to the river, and if I can find that, maybe I could tie it to that.
Yeah.
Down the straight into the belt, instead of going down that.
It would be nice not to have to worry about that.
Yeah. So we could maybe just have a pipeline hand that set it out there.
What size is that pipe coming out?
Oh, to the river, to the, I have no clue.
Okay.
I can probably guess it's sixty-eight.
Okay.
Inch.
Yeah.
But that's gonna be underground.
We, we did have a meeting, the water sewer committee had a meeting last week, um, after we saw the bill from Fremont that exceeded thirty thousand dollars for our sewer bill, what we had to pump to Fremont. And we, uh, made, made a request to add four hundred thousand to the budget for this next year to chase some serious infiltration issues. Um, we looked at comparing the rainfall totals, different months compared to the gallons pumped, compared to the gallons out of the tower. And there is a couple of months there that it's almost fifty fifty, um, out of the tower, there's almost double that going to Fremont. So we've got a, some serious infiltration issues that are costing the whole community a lot of money.
Just by the numbers, normally I'm guessing we probably pump two point five to three million. Yeah, I mean, the last month we pumped seven. The Fremont.
That's a lot of rainwater.
Eighteen thousand dollars. No? Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, so that's part of the reason we were requesting more money for the sewer to including everything from TVing the town to find out if it's borings from fiber that tore through a bunch of lines, we, we don't know.
Manholes.
And we just have to dive into it and, and figure out how bad it is. So far.
Yeah, our, uh, other than July, uh, or August, hold on, July of twenty thousand, twenty twenty-four. Besides that month, which must have been, I don't know if that was flood or just severe rain. July of twenty, was that the year they canceled the last day of the fair because of the rain?
Could be.
When they had. But besides that date, in two, since January of twenty-three, our last three months have been the highest months of gallons pumped to Fremont. So we've got an alarming trend. That expensive. I mean, that's shocking, those numbers when it goes from.
Expensive fix, but in the long run.
Yeah.
It'll be, so.
I hope we can get on that end of where it pays and where, you know, who knows what's going on behind all the things you fix.
Yeah.
Russ, did I see a crane up by the water tower today?
Yeah, that's, they were working on the. Cell tower.
Nevermind, I thought maybe they were cleaning.
They were supposed to be out Friday.
Okay.
And I just called them, right now, and I called this afternoon, this morning and this afternoon.
No word yet?
No. They're, they're gonna let me know in the morning.
Okay.
So hopefully that should be done this week.
Any other questions for Russ or the committee?
As far as that, I guess, what's the game plan there, start from down there and work your way back through into the field and the
Yeah.
Camera that.
I'd like to start on the old spots.
Yeah.
Yeah, bit kind of, so did that, where like the camera, everything.
And the number from here is matching up with the number there?
Pretty close. I bypassed down there. When I get all that rain, you know, there's probably, I should have wrote it out better. Probably six to seven days that I was bypassing that, it wasn't going through the meter. And it was seven, what was it, we said seven two to Fremont, I think I had six three, six four.
I just know when we had a big problem one other time, there was a leak between here and there. So that's why.
Here in Fremont?
Uh-huh. It was out.
For us. Rather than meet the river. Someone will drill a hole in the pipe. But.
You're saying it sprouted when the, the push was.
There is, yeah.
Things not to say.
Yeah.
I think the city got away with that for a long time, it seems like I read a story where that was happening across the river, but yeah, that was in their benefit. We, we're not seeming to find any of those problems that are in our benefit, yes.
But when you open the bypass, it's not ranked the meter.
It's not anchored in the meter.
Your measurements are lower than what.
That's why I have this lower. Cause I'm pumping. Now I can pump like a hundred and eighty through the meter, but when I open that up, I'm going straight. Instead of going through a four inch, I'm going through an eight inch.
Sure.
With both pumps running.
And you're only doing that when we have heavy rains, just.
That's when that is full. Way up. And when we had those ice springs, I mean, it took three days for that to even come down.
Got it.
Running both pumps constantly.
Yeah, something, something serious needs to be done to get in front of it, so.
At least some research to figure out where our problems.
Where, where, where we're at.
Okay. Well, thanks, Russ. Jump into police, hi, uh, Washington County Sheriff's report. Sheriff is gone, so it's just what we see there.
Just to add to the comments, I saw one after school today, the same story. It wasn't the same area, so I don't think it was the same person, but down, down towards the gas station, saw somebody driving with a babe in arms and it looked like one or two kids that I don't think were restrained in any way.
No, they're not supposed to be younger than seven, according to our ordinance.
Not even supposed to be on the car or the, the U T V.
Have no more than one passenger, it must be seated in the area specifically designed by the manufacturer for a passenger. No passenger may be less than seven years of age. I see under seven all the time.
I'd be willing to discuss changing the rules so that, you know, people could take their whole family, but I, I feel like there needs to be rules on restraint, and I don't know if you say that everyone has to be restrained, right? According to our ordinance.
Let's, uh.
Yeah.
But I think you can have more than one passenger if there's more than.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the driver should definitely not be preoccupied with holding something else.
It, it, and only one child under seven, I, I can see discussing that because you know, and changing that so that people could take their whole family. Um, but, yeah, the driving around with unrestrained kids is just not gonna be good.
And, and is this a violation of misdemeanor? I mean, is there something that if we ask the sheriff to enforce, do we have something for them to apply to this, if that makes sense?
I think we've put in a, a dollar amount for any.
Is that what we need to do or is that in place?
I think it's in place.
Okay.
For any moving violation. We can check on that.
Okay. Our last quarterly meeting, we had the sheriff prioritize checking into, kind of monitoring those around town if they're licensed and.
Why does that seem like a broken record?
Yeah, I don't think much has happened since our last discussion.
Okay.
I'll take as two or three stops to make an example, the order would be spread by any. That would help.
On the golf cart, it doesn't seem to be any restrictions for age. So if you wanna give your whole family that's under seven or I buy a golf cart.
And I don't think those have.
I think some of it's a speed thing, I think, probably.
Although what I saw was the golf cart, so there, there may not be seatbelt or, uh, I don't know if they have the seatbelt rule.
It doesn't say that on here. Just says the number of occupants in any golf cart vehicle being operated within the village, and we are restricted to the number of seats on the golf cart vehicle. And in no event more than four. But there's golf carts that are running around with six seats.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think. Cause they were looking at buying a six person and said, well, if the rule only allow four, that's silly.
Um, uh, bridging over committee report, Scott and Jason, anything else? For the sheriff?
The violation penalty is, uh, fifty dollars. Or twenty-five first offense, fifty second offense, hundred for a third. Maximum fine for the first and any subsequent violation to be up to five hundred dollars provided by law, so there are violations already in the ordinance. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm glad you did, thank you.
And the same for the golf carts.
Okay, anything else on the committee report? Uh, Jason, you link the group.
No, we probably should have a follow-up meeting though, maybe with him after tonight's public comment.
Yeah, I would say.
Let's see if we can meet with him, the.
We'll see, uh, see on the Zoom for that.
Yeah, he was, I think he heard it, I heard of him.
That's why he said, can you please get me the number?
Yes, he was, that's right.
Talk to him about it, yeah. And I'm assuming he's gonna give him the same spiel that he gives us typically is, hey, as soon as people see it, report it. If they don't report it, then we don't know about it, we can't do anything about it. In that situation, what I would say is, I, if there was actually a sheriff deputy in town, I would have called the nine one one number probably. Because then you'd be able to get directly to dispatch and get to that particular officer, I would think. But we can verify that with the sheriff as to what the, how to handle that situation. It doesn't sound like Wayne called the sheriff. So in the sheriff's defense, it is kind of hard for them to enforce something if.
It's always scary to call nine one one, report something like that, I'd be the same way, but that's what it takes, the time emergency number with them. That's what they're there for, he tells us that.
Mm-hmm.
The thing is, people will call us immediately after.
Of course they will.
And then we'll like, we'll call the non-emergency, like, well, we don't wanna call them.
We need to, we need a witness to make the.
Right, yeah.
That's how you answer it.
Of course, they're not gonna do anything.
Yeah.
I guess that's the only thing you can do is stress that to them, here's the non-emergency number, they will need a witness to. Big money for them.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was disappointing to hear that comment today at the meeting, though. And he said, did he tell us the time, Wayne? Said roughly before school, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was right away.
So we should be able to go back and look at the logs and see which deputy was there.
He was there.
He called you guys, right?
Yeah, right, okay, yeah.
It was like eight oh three, maybe.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Let's, uh, take one more look at the radar sign report, I know John mentioned it. Looks like the trend since September third on, there's a few higher sixties and seventies. So, John, uh, you're. The question is, what is, what's it doing for us? It looks like maybe it has an impact. Boy, September eleventh, adding a lot of speakers. Burn sixty-three. Uh, any other comments on the radar report? Jason, good?
Good.
All right. We're gonna move on down, um, to J, Parks Committee Report, Jeremy and Travis. Oh, really, other than budget discussions, there's been nothing else, uh, around the parks, I think the, the pool project has been the the elephant in the room for right now, so really, nothing else we've really talked about.
Yes, with the process, um, I know from what I saw in the budget, we are firmly scheduled to have the pickleball and the basketball or in that budget, correct?
It did make the budget, yeah.
So, I'm gonna have to work on the estimates. We, we'll probably have to put that up there, it's more than anyone get free estimates.
I would assume so, yeah. Yeah, and, and you had one you were talking to already, right? We have one.
Yeah, that with the, with the, the Simons or whatever it's.
Yeah. Jeff Simons.
Yeah. Pro quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know that there's a lot of companies that will do that. But I'll have to check it out.
Okay.
That was gonna be my question too, I see on the budget, it sounds like we're doing it.
Yeah.
This year.
Yeah.
Really doing it.
We budget forward and then we get a couple bids and the board approves the project, I guess we can move forward. We budget for it and then we get a couple of bids and then Ford approves the project, I guess we can move forward.
Yeah. And if the bids come back more than we budgeted for, I guess we reevaluate.
Then we have a decision to make. Item B, monthly library report. There is no report this month. They are meeting tomorrow. Really no hot button subjects or any hot topics.
The new cameras. Pointing at the park or they're pointing at the.
Parks, front door. So, got two on the west side of the building, one in the front of the auditorium and one in the.
And then there's two more channels, so if they want two more cameras at any time, that's an option.
I mean, this is just a few just coming here and it's recording, or is it just live?
I think it's kind of like the other one where you'd have to set it to record, and so you think it's just live. My understanding, it's awesome.
I think there's a DVR on it. It's a, I think it's got. Uh, I'm one, I bet it has a hundred days in minutes, you know, a minute.
Cycles.
I haven't really played with it that much either.
It's not on motion.
It records on motion, yeah. You know, and you can watch the whole thing, it'll only record it. But you can also you.
Anything else on parks, library, et cetera? No, good, good, alright. Let's move on. Cemetery Committee Report, Scott and Jeremy.
Yeah. Friends, I like John's idea, use up our budget money for that rock and get it here that way. We'll have her ready to go. It's kind of my.
I know there's a lot of washouts out there, that's why we didn't say that, from the. Rain and stuff. Get some paint to fill them.
John, when you said in this budget year, you're talking current years?
First budget years.
Hoping you get it.
Either. They have to go get it before we definitely build out, or I just have to have somebody haul us a couple loads and then use that budget up. But I think if we have the uh, the bill. Um, made out before October.
Okay. Um, anything else on the cemetery? All right. Let's go to administrative. Uh, item A, Washington County Building Permit Report. We have. We're gonna go. Edition. Just a couple of items this month. Anything else on the? Building permit report, I'm gonna move on to the clerk report. Kate? What do you have for us?
Let's see, um, monthly utility bills gave me a lot of problems this month and took me. Two days, I think, total or three days because. A printer, the printer's driver like updated or something, and so it wouldn't print correctly. So then I had to reach out to G Works Customer Service. And then that took a whole day. They got back to me by the end of the day, so then I was able to print them correctly. So then the following day, I tried sorting through the mess I made after everything that had happened. Couldn't, so then I just started all over. So just an example of. Why things take me terribly long, so. Anyway, um. Matt with Russ and Paul and Travis invited to discuss sewer infiltration, watch selling stop cameras. Um, Washington County had called about special election, but we got that sorted out. We can have it summer night. Been working for Boston on that. Jake marked the plot for Fremont Monument, no box sales, um. Eeks came out to help us regain access to the highway sign software. Um, twelve points just didn't transfer correctly, but we all have access now, um, so it's good. Um, Eeks came out to install us's computer and then nuisance letters down there. The two at the end I have dated for tomorrow, because it was pending the plastic award on six eighty eighth. Um. Yeah, so. Off the budget stuff.
Kate, what'd you learn from your class?
Um, a lot, actually. It was. Pretty informative. Most of it's like kind of just resources for grant writing. So a lot of stuff that I didn't know about as far as where do I find them, things like that. Then the rest was just kind of general, like if you've never seen a grant. It just kind of went block by block like that, but overall it was very helpful and I completed it, so good.
Great. Hopefully you can use that soon.
Well, so you gotta, you gotta go on what, where you're gonna pursue first or?
No, I think I'm going to. Put some things out and just start doing like grant writing, like my own time. Random people or things I needed just for some practice and go from there.
Excellent. Um, anything else on the clerk report? If not, we're gonna move on to item C, discussion of possible approval. To approve Sarah Hammerland CPA as auditor for the twenty twenty six.
The only number I see in there is ninety five hundred. Is that the amount, the total? I'll make a motion to approve Sharon Hammerland CPA as auditor for twenty twenty six in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Second that.
Kate, we have a motion and a second to approve. The uh, bid from Sarah Hammerland CPA as our auditor for the twenty twenty six year in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars. Let's have a vote.
Scott McCorny.
Hi.
Jeremy Hansen.
Item B, discussion of possible approval of copier from Eeks in the amount of eight thousand. Three hundred eighty six dollars and forty three cents.
There is a hard copy of this and it came in a little less, so the reason they wanted me to put it on this budget or this. Uh, board meeting for approval was because it's going to be affected by tariffs starting, they were told later this week.
Is that number also in next year's budget?
So I have it in next year's budget, but I talked about pulling it out of this year's budget.
Then we could still put it in this year's budget still.
To help reduce some of, I mean, you know, nine thousand dollars out of next year's budget. Um, otherwise this can just be approved and then ordered and we can up the Jeff next fiscal year. So it's kind of just.
First thing, the invoice to be before the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah.
Not, I said, it needs to be after October first.
If you want to win.
So we have, there is nine.
Hopefully be the benefits of waiting.
Yeah, there, I saw ten thousand at least, so.
Things that we can get processed and that. They didn't take out, they didn't.
We can.
So our cash loss and problem from that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the copier for the office from Eeks in the amount of eight thousand. Three hundred eighty six dollars and forty three cents.
So are they taking the old one, Kate? Is there a trade in on that or or stuck with it or?
I mean, I guess they didn't ask for a trade in.
Sometimes they'll do that.
They don't make those manuals anymore, and they don't make parts for that model anymore. So my guess is the trade in values next.
Let's go into it with the gentleman. Sounds good.
That's what we talked about.
Okay, all right.
It's not worth much anymore.
Wait a second on that.
Did you second?
I did.
Kate, we have a motion and second to approve the bid from Eeks for the copier in the amount of eight thousand three hundred eighty six dollars and forty three cents. Let's have a vote.
Jeremy Hansen.
Hi.
Jason Weese. Paul Kraus.
Hi.
Scott McCorny.
Hi.
Travis Kramer.
Hi. Uh, the only other thing, if we wanted to go to executive session to discuss employee wages. Ordinance six eighty seven, that is an option. Or we can um. Wait and do it in the next meeting, that is the, it's decision.
Wait till the next meeting if you want.
I mean, either way, if there's any discussion we need to have, just to. Get some focus or clarification and we can. Probably wouldn't hurt. We haven't had much dialogue on this, so at least keep going with it, so. My recommendation is that we go into a session, walk through a little bit of some. Things have been discussed.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session to discuss salary, salaries and wages.
Kate, we have a motion and second to go into executive session to discuss salaries and wages and have a vote.
Jason Weese.
Alright.
Paul Kraus.
Alright.
Jeremy Hansen.
Alright.
Scott McCorny.
Hi.
You can look at this before you go. You're gonna stay, I'll do it later.
Thank you.